We're ready. All right. Will you all join us for the budget legions, please?
I believe this.
Really? Yeah, there's okay. We're official now. Now we have the board there. All right, we will call the September seventh, the town of Demers got us. Select Board Meeting to order. I guess we might start with a, it was all the same to everybody. We have a couple of liquor licenses renewals. So instead of making everybody wait till the end of the. Meeting, you know, is it all the same to the board? Do you want to move those along or? Good, good. All right. Uh, we have a renewal for best tie. Air motion on that.
Motion to approve the liquor license renewal for best tie.
I think Tom, Andrew, your second, Andrew seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that one passes right along. So it's good and we have Damers got a river house as well. Want to hit that one, Tom?
Renewal for the River House liquor license.
All right. And Andrew, your second. Okay. Although any discussion? In favor?
No, we're happy for both.
We want to sign these now. They have to pick them up anyway. Do you want to sign them now?
Do them at the end. I think Becky might have to do.
Okay, yeah. Yep. So we'll get. They can pick them up tomorrow. Yeah. So yeah, we're good. Okay. Cool. Move along. We have the minutes of August seventeenth. Did we get a chance to take a look at the minutes? Ready? We hear motion on the seven, August seventeenth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve August seventeenth.
Thank you, Josh.
A second.
You want that one?
I don't know, whatever.
Andrea seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries and now financial reports. So we have a couple of payroll warrants, numbers eleven and twelve.
I'll move eleven and twelve.
Josh is going to move eleven and twelve. Tom's going to second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hey, so moved. And we have one AP warrant, number thirteen. Accounts payable.
That we approve accounts payable number thirteen.
Awesome. I'll second that one. And any discussion?
I guess the only question is when we start paying. For. Snowplow.
Uh, we've been asked to put it off at the moment. So we'll have an update hopefully the next meeting on that. The request came from the contractor, so. We didn't pay September yet.
Your brother. Hmm. Yeah. We didn't pay September yet.
Not yet, at the request of the contractor.
So are we getting the facility fixed before they get paid?
Um, we can talk further about that. I know I talked with you about getting that done soon. All the parts, as far as I understand it, are there.
Yeah, we withheld payment. Uh, what for the repair? I'm trying to remember.
We withheld. We withheld that. Two years ago, I think it was.
There's been a couple. Yeah, a couple.
So. You know.
The amount was deducted out of the payment.
Maybe we give a deadline and say, we'll give you thirty days to. Get it repaired. If not, we gotta do it, you know.
Right.
You know.
That's where I kind of left it with our, our workers was that it has to get done before this winter season starts and that we'll probably do it because everything's there. So it's been so long at this point.
I have an email from May of. Two thousand twenty-one saying parts are in hand. We're going to do it. We want our money basically and.
Right.
We are September of twenty-two. Oh, so.
It'll be done before winter starts.
So I don't know. I, I guess if you don't eat your dinner, you don't get your dessert. I didn't sign it. And I have to abstain on this one because one of my family members is on the house.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, let's, all those in favor? On the motion?
I'm abstaining.
Yeah. Or we've got one, one abstain. Okay. No.
I did not. I didn't know what to discuss.
Yeah, did we just do an AP thirteen? So we've got, we've got four on there. And yeah, we've got three of us here. So. Two, two abstain. Yep. So, all right.
Lou, don't sign payroll ones because you weren't here to vote on it.
Yeah. Hey. Hang on to it. So, um, and do you have any citizen comments or correspondence?
There was one that came in from the Lincoln County Budget Advisory Committee on behalf of them. Uh, so the Thursday, September fifteenth, next Thursday, there's a meeting at three P M. Um, at the courthouse in Lincoln County. Um, and at this point, they need to elect someone from one of the, from. From the district, um, District Three, which we're in. It's all the Demersgada, Dresden, Jefferson, Newcastle, Somerville and Whitefield. So they need a representative on the Budget Committee from that district. Um, and they're requesting that all the select board members from each community be there that day.
At that, at three o'clock?
Yes.
That's great.
Um, next Thursday.
I guess they're really looking for volunteers, huh?
Yeah.
I, I can do it, Andy.
Yeah, I thought I usually did that.
Is your term still good?
Yes.
If your term's still good, you're still on it. So.
Yeah. And it's Thursday. To, Lou, you're still interested in serving on that as a representative?
Well, he still, he still may be on it. His term may not have expired.
Okay, maybe it's just an additional. They don't. So have the full.
Time of day does. Yeah. It there, huh? Okay, uh, do we have any citizens comments or? Correspondents from the, from the audience today? Raise over the waiting patiently. Uh, Jeff, anybody on Zoom with their hands up? I don't see anything. Okay, well, we're on them. So Andy, we've got some, uh. Town manager items, some capital project updates and whatnot to go through.
Uh, sure. Yeah, Andrew is here with us and. For capital projects, so Church Street, um, you mentioned a couple of things you could share on, on that one if the board's interested. Um, yeah, he's also here as well in the capacity for the bid, the capital projects that were out to bid that we've received as well. So. Um, I don't know if you want to share any of the church street updates as well. I think you said you had some updates on Hodgson. While he's doing that, we did get the, um, small grant to help do the additional data analysis on the church street culvert. Um, and so that's something that I'm still waiting to hear from the, from consultant that would do the work. Um, so I haven't heard back as when his availability will be this for this fall. Um, but once that gets completed, we'll be able to look at D E P funding. Um, for that, that crossing.
What was that grant for again?
Um, it sounds like it ranges from half a million to a million.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So we need to hurry up and get on that, um, analysis soon. So I think that window's opening up soon or at may have already.
Yep.
So my name is Andrew Henner. I'm a civil engineer from Berlino and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying. We have all through the building Camden and Grand Canyon and Demersgada. Um, so I wanted to come in tonight to kind of answer any questions you had on the bids that you received from Mile Street. Uh, we got multiple bids in for that in the Belvedere and East Grove paving project. So I'm here to answer any of those questions. Um, and I also wanted to kind of give you an update. On the church street. Um, project. So the church street project, uh, runs all the way down from Pleasant Street up to Main Street essentially. So this is kind of morphed. It started as a simple sidewalk project that we're going to work on and then it turned into. Uh, the culvert replacement that's going to happen there. And then there's a section of road, uh, that also needs to be replaced and rebuilt. So what we've done. Is we've taken this project and kind of wrapped it all into one so that we could put together plans that are clear and concise and kind of work through with the town. So. Um, basically, given the quick summary, the London streets down here, um, and what we've shown is when we're looking at the paving project, when you guys are looking at pay bidding. A Belvedere each road in a piece of church street. We pulled the church street component out because it was different than just the paving. We're doing some of the ditching. So. Uh, we conducted a geotechnical investigation on that section. Uh, we found that. Uh, while there's a, a lot of pavement in that area, there's somewhere between five and seven inches of pavement. Uh, and a number of the borings, there was one inch of gravel below it. So essentially it was a dirt road and they just paved and paved and paved over it. So. Uh, what we're left with is a, a section of road, uh, that's really needs to be rebuilt. Uh, so rather than rebuild the section of road, come back later, put a piece of sidewalk next to it, deal with the drainage. It, it made sense to kind of wrap it into this church street sidewalk project. So we can include it on the bids when we get ready to proceed with that. Uh, so that section extends from Pleasant Street all the way to Hillside Lane. It's about a thousand feet long. Um, and in that section, you know, we talked about putting the sidewalk along the edge there, rebuilding the road. Uh, and then from there all the way to Main Street, uh, is where the sidewalk, uh, is going to be located. We do have an encroachment right at, uh, this Casner landing, kind of right at the corner. As it gets tight there, we do have an encroachment that will require easements. Uh, from three of the adjacent landowners in that, uh, in that section. Uh, so they should be, we should begin kind of communication with them, make sure that they're receptive to that. Um, it's, it's. We really, it'd be beneficial to leave the sidewalk where we proposed it just due to the road radius there. It's steep, it's downhill. If we start moving and realigning the road. It's gonna, it's gonna really impact things there. Uh, up on the upper end closer to Main Street, we were able to do just that is realign the road. It's flat. There was plenty of shoulder wide open. So. That's exactly what we're proposing for this, uh, you know. About eight hundred foot section of road down here is rather than. Request easements, we'll shift the road over five, six, seven feet, the width of the sidewalk. And then we'll construct a sidewalk down basically where the edge of the road begin. So we'll kind of realign things and there's plenty of room to do that. So. Down on this corner, we can't really make that work. So hopefully we can start that coordination to make sure we're aware. Uh, with those landowners as we move forward with this. Uh, the other component that we've incorporated is this Casner Brook crossing. So as you're aware, that's kind of the ongoing funding and we're looking at. Uh, taking the design that was done by another engineer, uh, putting it in, in there, making it all work and starting to prepare the permit applications for that. So we already have contracts to proceed with that. Uh, I believe the other engineer is now working on putting together or planning to work on putting together some additional information that was requested by the, the funding agencies, some of the grant. Uh, agencies have requested some additional information. But this crossing will be, we're envisioning a, a precast, um, box culvert, three sided box culvert. Uh, or four sided, the original ones, four sided, we'll probably switch that to a three sided, uh, box culvert by the time we're done here, wide enough to span the stream, meet all the. The stream smart requirements and incorporate the sidewalk across the top of it. Uh, so that we can keep it all and have a cohesive sidewalk all the way down to, to Pleasant Street there. So there are a number of items that, uh, what I think the best way to do is I'd love to send it over to the board to kind of look at. There's a lot of. Um, I, I wouldn't say minutia, but there's a lot of small things on how I'd like to see and kind of request how you'd want to handle it, whether you want Andrew. Andrew doing it or Josh is going to handle those components, but there's things like. How you want to see sidewalks and connections and some of these things that I would like the town to make those decisions on how things come. We'll make recommendations, but we have things like. Uh, one of the, one of the. The, the big entities is where the location of the sewer line is versus where the curb line is. So there's some, there's give and take there, of course, that curb line is right below, right above where that sewer line is currently and. Uh, it causes problems both with, with the placement of the curb and with how we're going to handle stormwater for that section. So we're gonna. All the stormwater is going to be in a closed system by the time this project's done, uh, through most of this section. So. To get the catch basin in place and a storm drain in place along curb line with the. The sanitary there, there comes, you start looking at a little of, a lot of over crossing and overlapping there. So. Uh, we'll, we'll put some plans together that show that and show where we have conflicts. I'd love to bounce them off you guys to kind of peek at and review and make, make sure we're all on the same page, but. But we are proceeding with this. We are working on this. Um, I talked to our geotechnical engineer, uh, that did the original borings, uh, for the other engineer, essentially Summit Geoengineering. I did some borings out there, but what they did not do, uh, they did not do any bearing capacity calculation. So. They have conducted borings and the boring showed them the material that was there and it showed them the presence of ledge, which is great. Uh, but the next level is for them to actually do some calculations and determine a bearing capacity so that we can adequately size the footings. You know, if we have a better bearing capacity, we'd make smaller footing. Poor bearing capacity, you get a large footing there. So we really need that information so that we can, we can hand that off. Uh, essentially what we do is we size the structure, we get it right, and then we send it off to the precast designer. And manufacturer and they will look at the footing sizes and kind of go through those calculations based on their software and it, it kind of streamlines a process and avoids. Uh, having to have us design it, then hand it to them to check it and review what they just kind of do that design process. Um, but so we'll get that information to them once we get this finalized, once we get the permits prepared. Um, but realistically speaking, I mean, this is obviously a next year project. The earliest I think you would have permits is through this winter, everything would be permitted for that stream crossing. I think we continue down that path and then you have it ready. Uh, for that next, uh, season, which is going to be that July fifteenth through, uh, September thirty first, thirtieth. Uh, where you can actually construct in the stream. So I think that's the target for this unless the town decides they want to delay it. Um, you know, further, but that's the goal we've been kind of looking at is trying to have designs ready, have everything kind of up and running, get the permits in place, uh, this fall and this winter for that stream crossing. And then kind of set, send this whole thing out as one big package, uh, for construction. You don't have to. Build it that way. I just recommend put it all out at once. We will put options in there, similar to the bids we just sent out. So you can kind of see if you just side and you only have the appetite. Funding available to do the Casner Brook crossing, you could kind of pick that piece off and save the rest for later or kind of push it to a different season and likewise for some of the sidewalk. Uh, or some of the other things. So, um, we'll continue our coordination with that. Um, I do have.
Andrew, I just had a couple of questions on Church Street. Yes, sir. In talking with Scott Abitoni, the water district.
Yes.
They are engineering from their engineer to replace that water line.
Perfect.
So if we can get a timing right, um, I don't know if you want to get in touch with him.
Oh, I will. Absolutely.
So that, that's a major component because that's one of their oldest lines that they have.
Yeah.
We can get that all done at the same time and.
That's great information. I'll reach out to them and I'm sure I can get my hands on the design and what we usually do is we overlay their design written in our plan so we can see where it is and. I assume they're going to do that independently with the town or are they going to work with the town to?
I think they were gonna, they were looking at different funds they were going to apply for.
Okay.
Um, but if we can piggyback and work together.
Right.
Be great.
Oftentimes the, the water districts, it's. I hate to say, but it's less convoluted if they just go in and replace it and get it back, you know, it's kind of, they don't have to wait for anybody that are on their own schedule and can do it, but, uh. But I'll reach out to Scott and we'll have a conversation with him and at least start that process to see how they want to handle it and, and get their real timing. Are they looking at next year to?
I think they're gonna try to do it in conjunction when we want to get going.
Excellent. I'll make that connection then.
Be good. Um. And the other question I had is, you know, you have precast. For that string crossing, for Castner Brook. How long is that precast? Do you think the lifetime? I'm looking at composite versus.
Yeah. So what we usually tell people, um, this is going to be in the salt water. So you're going to reduce that a little bit. Um, but usually, uh, precast, you're looking at seventy-five to a hundred years, you know, for the precast structures. Um, I don't have experience with composite. Every time I've looked down that path is. If, if it gets, if it's much beyond the normal, I'm, I'm, I don't mind looking outside the box, but if it's much beyond the normal and you start having to reanalyze things and do things slightly different. And you get into a different product source and availability, I get a little uncomfortable and nervous. Um, but I think to, to put a Casner Brook crossing in there, if you do a precast structure in there, you get it, make sure it's saltwater tolerant. And you do everything you can, you know, coating the bars, doing what we can, because there'll be another layer of these things because it is going to be in a saltwater, uh, region here that, uh, that we'll be careful to make sure. So seventy-five, a hundred years.
That's why I asked you about the composite.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's it. The composite's great, but it's, it's the availability and the thing. And I just don't have a lot of experience, uh, with that. I, I've read. You know, stuff and reports about it, but I haven't ever designed one using that, quite honestly.
Andrew, we do have a question. Pat, I think it'd be Patty Whitten, uh, who's online here on Zoom has a, has a question for you.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. I'm, Demers got a cemetery trustee, so I have a particular interest in the, as the sidewalk goes past hillside. Couple of questions. Andrew recently raised the question of the stone wall and the. Uh, lack of the better word, an integrity of that stone wall as the sidewalk comes close to it. And then the second piece of it is the receiving tomb, both in the course of, we have to maintain. The ability to open the doors to the receiving tomb. And then there is a, I don't know the technical term, like a wing of concrete. That comes out, that's part of the support structure from the receiving tomb. And I'm not sure how that is impacted or if that impacts the sidewalk, if there's anything you can address about that, or maybe this isn't the moment to have that question.
No, I, what I have, I don't have the precise locations for the tomb doors. Um, what we do show on our plan here is we located that retaining wall. Um, we show it along the backside. It looks like we have about four or five feet between where that retaining wall is and the sidewalk. Um, and with us bringing the wall up, I would envision we're just going to be filling along that wall, but I, I will take a closer look at that. Um, I'll, I'll inspect the, the wall a little bit closer to see if there's issues there and, and if we need to address it all at once, uh, we can make those recommendations. Uh, again, we're going through the design. Uh, we're far from being completed, that's for sure. Um, so we're just trying to do the permanent planning. So that's wonderful information. Thank you. I did put a note down here about the tomb doors, so we'll check those out in the concrete locations. Uh, as well as that, uh, that retaining wall. So if we get in the situation it is, it looks like it's right along where the right of way is. So. So we'll look and, and then maybe the cemetery in town can work together on the best way to, uh, to kind of rehab that if it is needed.
Yeah, and I'm happy at any point to meet somebody there with a key if you need to take a look at, at. Overall structure, there was an additional retaining wall wing kind of thing. To the left of the receiving tomb that disintegrated. And it had stairs on it for safety sake, to prevent people from getting on broken downstairs. We simply removed that several years ago. That may or may not impact any of your design work.
Perfect. No, that is great information. I'd love to meet you out there. We'll set up a time, uh, we'll get, uh, my email and contact information to you and, uh, we'll set up a time, hopefully. Uh, that we can, I can meet you right there on site and we can look at these together.
That'd be perfect. Thank you very much. And when you get to it, I will also have a question regarding the Egypt road. So I'll stay out of the way until you get to that.
All right. Thank you, Patty.
We answer all the questions on this?
All good, Andrew.
Now, I wanted, uh, while I had your attention, I wanted to throw a Hodgson Street. I know that's right on the. On the, uh, the agenda here or soon, soon in the works. Um, this is where we have it right now. So we've done the, the designs. We've talked about this. Uh, we've done some coordination. I think the last pieces. Uh, that remain is we need to simply update the drawing, which we're finalizing. Uh, the only updates really are to add some parking spaces, uh, working with Jessica here. She wanted to make sure we gave her parking space. We need to. Add a parking space here along Hodgson Street, kind of rework the drainage to make sure we're not creating a problem there. And, uh, we were going to look at, uh, how we can reconfigure, uh, this parking here. Uh, our last correspondence with these people has never been with the owner of this property. It's been with the tenants of this property. So I think the town needs to continue coordinating with them directly to make sure we have tenant contact. Um, you know, owner contact so that we can make sure we do what they're looking for and not what their tenants, uh, hoping to get out of it. So. So that's still the remaining piece. We're gonna come up with some schematic. We know they want to see some improved parking because we are gonna. You can't really, by the time we get done with our road improvements, you're left with this odd shaped and, uh, previously. The town didn't seem to eject to just allowing them to kind of give a two or three or four straight in parking spaces. Uh, off Hodgson to kind of make that work. So we'll come up with some configuration, uh, that will present, uh, we'll, we'll send it over to, uh, to the town to review and. And then perhaps I can use that to reach out to the owner of that property and see where we stand and make sure they're on board with that. But. Other than that, we should be ready to have this thing, uh, wrapped up and ready to go out to bid. So. I would recommend on this project is, is wait a little bit longer. Um, unless you have, I know you have some funding available for that, but as long as that doesn't expire. Uh, right now, I'm not sure you can find a contract, do anything right now, but I would recommend waiting until this October, November, I find bidding gets a little softer in that November time rate as. They see the paving window starting to close. They already, they're already starting to look towards the next. They see the paving window starting to close, they already, they're already starting to look towards the next season, so somewhere in the, in the next few months. Uh, this could be wrapped up and ready to go out and send it out to the contractors. Uh, kind of in that, that window there, uh, so you can get them geared up in the spring if that's when the town has the appetite to to move forward with this project.
What parking is, what building is that parking in front of?
This is uh, this is the, the, the residential house. I believe there's like three or four tenants in it. Um, so it's the one, the, the first one on the right. So if you go up Hodgson Street is the first one on the right, it's a large building there, there's a barn right here. Um, and then, and they, they all park up in here, so they kind of line up and park in that driveway, it's just right there, okay, yeah. It's up in that location, so it's it's kind of convoluted as it is and the fact that we're widening the road. Cause some of them park along this area too, kind of in where the road's going to be. So we want to give them, I think this is the opportune time to clean that driveway up a little bit, realign it, uh, work with them and it won't be uh. Uh, substantial undertaking, I think. I think we can make it all work for everybody. I would a little bit of. You know, reconfiguration of that entrance.
Just moving lines.
Exactly, just kind of shifting it around, right? So, that's that one. Any questions we have on Miles? And the other, in the, the, the bids we received.
This is, oh, we've got Miles up there.
Yeah, this is Miles. Yes, I brought that just in case somebody asked me how long it was and I asked me too many details about that.
Uh, any uh comments, questions on, for Andrew on uh, the Miles uh, design?
Glad you're putting in the better sidewalk.
We are.
So just to give a summary, so, so we sent it out to bid um with multiple options, um. So the, the project was reduced um to about five hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, basically from the intersection of Schooner Street uh down to just beyond where the hydrants located uh along uh Mile Street there at the front of the hospital. Um, so we gave multiple options when we sent this out to bid. Uh, the first option uh was to have a flush sidewalk, just paint a line, flush sidewalk. Uh, and kind of blend it all into the road. It wouldn't really be a sidewalk, it'd be a, a wider travel lane, if you will, you know, so that you can multi-use. You can kind of walk down, ride your bike, uh, whatever's needed. Uh, the second option was to include an asphalt curb, do a raised sidewalk with an asphalt curb. The third option was to do the raised sidewalk with the granite curb, so it's a narrow road. Benefit from having a granite curb in that section. Anytime you have a narrower road. Um, it just withstands, you know, the plow blade usually is going to run right along that curb line. And it'll last, you know, ten times longer if not, you know, more than that.
Are we raising the height of it for?
Oh, this road's coming up. Uh, I have it a profile sheet, but roughly it's coming up two and a half, three feet in elevation. Yeah, so we're making, that was a whole goal of this project. Uh, it was not the sidewalk, it was to raise it up, make it withstand the flooding. We're up above. All the flooding events and some uh to make sure we clear those limits. Yes, so and and when we rebid this, this time, the difference is, I know people have heard about this a hundred times over the last couple of years. Um, we're back here again rebidding it because when we sent it out last time, the bids came in too high. Um, and it was primarily due to the fact that we had a. Um, a, a granite, a, a precast concrete block wall. Uh, that we are running down this entire section. We tried to stay outside of the permitting because that's what the permitting agencies want you to do. Uh, so we went through the exercise, we decided it was uh too expensive for the precast block wall. And looking at designs and costs and pricing, uh, we determined that if we rip wrap the sideslip there, we could. Cut the project cost significantly, and I think the bid prices actually show that considering that. Since we originally started this, everything's increased by about fifty percent, but we were able to get the project cost still down to about what we were. Anticipating originally anyways, so, so we reduced that, we did rip wrap side slopes. Uh, down both sides of the road, uh, and then we sent it back out to rebid. We also shortened up. The magnitude of the project up instead of going all the way to Briscoe Road, uh, we just kind of picked a, a spot past the intersection. To redo the causeway, the one that's damaged, get that up out of the flood, take care of the drainage there. Uh, we are proposing still to include uh some basins for future lights down that section. We didn't include lights, but we included. Uh, they're going to put in precast basins to support the lights that will ultimately go there and run the conduits in between, so it should be ready to go. Um, it was again, just trying to save costs and trying to keep, keep the budget under control. Uh, we are making a significant upgrade to the stream uh crossing down there. We're upsizing that. I know there's all. I mean, just recently I was down there when that thing was flooding and water was coming up over it, so.
It's really bad.
I, I think we've increased the capacity of that by about a hundred percent, so we upsize the pipe, we're using a smooth pipe and we're running a straight shot. There's kind of a kink in the pipe now. Um, it's a precast concrete, we're going to switch it to a plastic HDP pipe. Uh, you know, that's three and a half feet diameter uh to kind of run through there. The hospital is also independently going to replace the water line. Causeway, so we separated that from the bid too, so those numbers are all nice and clean and clear. Uh, but we did receive three bids. Um, they were from, I believe, uh, it was Jake Barber, uh, Crooker, right on this one, yep. And uh, and Hager were the other ones that did the price and Hager was the, the low bidder. Uh, by about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, so it was a significant uh difference in the price. Um, but I, I've, I've worked with Hager, I know them. Usually when I see a, a price jump uh in those ranges. I start questioning because the other two bids, uh, the bids were. Uh, roughly Jake Barber was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, Crooker was five, the six hundred and fifty thousand, and Hager was five hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, so whenever I see a price jump like that, I, I question to make sure they understand it, but. Hager is fully familiar with this. I talked to the, the project manager for this. He understood it, understands it. He's right here local, his mobilization charges are very low, um, so they can come into town and do this and they're very anxious to do it. Uh, they, I think this is, might be the third time they put numbers to this project, so I know they're pretty. They're pretty hungry to get this project and that's why I think represented in their uh, their, their numbers.
As long as they do good work.
And I, I've worked with uh, with Hager a number of times and I've seen, I've seen great work out of them, quite honestly. I've been working with them all summer this year, they. They've never left me disappointed. Every time I've run into them, I did another project and there was a little few issues where. You know, the, the rock along the side of the road wasn't, I wasn't quite happy. They came back and fixed it at no charge, so. I, I've been very comfortable working with them uh in the past and, and, and hopefully in the future.
Thank you, and we're all, all set with permitting for our engineers.
Oh, yeah, that, that's all been taken care of, yeah. I think we, I think we amended those three times. Every time we had to change, just had to go back and amend it. We have all the permits we need, we are ready to go.
It's always something they roll up.
No, this one could be constructed and they could start uh right away, all the bid prices. Uh, I believe when they sent those bids in, nobody said they could do it this fall, they'll put it in the spring, so. It's unfortunate that you're going to have to ride through another winter with that thing, but. With all the rock that's been put in place and the pavement patching, it seems to be in decent shape. Not great, but it seems to be in stable enough shape, so you're not going to start losing stuff like. The last winter when we were going into that with a side eroding, that's all been stabilized and kind of packed in there nicely, so. Again, it's not going to be fun to plow, it's going to be, you have to watch it, but. Uh, one more season.
Rough down through there.
Season to go, then you can get somebody in there.
Yeah, it's, it's super rough down through there, so. And we're uh, Andrew, funding wise for Mile Street, um. We're pretty good shape as far as we get the ARCA funds and. Miles match and, and whatnot, or?
Yeah, I was looking at the past uh minutes or notes that were in the office, you know, there was a hundred and eighty-five thousand uh plus. From designated from the local fiscal recovery fund, um, a two hundred thousand dollar. Match or contribution from Lincoln Health. And then a note that two hundred thousand come from the general fund capital reserves. And then that gives you five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one seventy-nine. Um, so then just as a matter of, we need to add in the engineering fees and the, and then those permitting fees into the numbers we just got. On the construction bids, um, and work from there, so, um. I think the biggest question is which of the three, which of the three options that were presented in the bid, do you want to go with? The one for the granite curb, the asphalt curb, and then a non-raised, you know, section four sidewalk, but not a raised one. Um, so if you look at the bid, the bid results, there were three options that were presented, and so. My recommendation at this point would be to, uh, as you see in the notes there, to select a contractor. And allow us to then start a conversation with the hospital, um, presumably, you know, the engineers, presumably the contractor that's been selected to. Um, give you a, a good, a better proposal for which of those three we think we should do. There's a pretty big price difference between those three options.
Bid on all three.
Yes, right on the three different. Alternative, so, yeah.
There's a seventy thousand dollar difference between the, the widened road that would still allow for pedestrian use along the side of the road, but not raised. Um, and a seventy thousand dollar difference to that of the raised granite curb sidewalk. So I think that's just something that we need to look at, um, and think about. In, in what's, what's the priority? How does the town want to do it? How do we, you know? Do we have the funds to pay for it? Do you need to dip further into your reserves or not?
And how long, how long, where does it go? The, the, this, you had the, uh, the granite.
The, the sidewalk was stopped by just before Schooner Street. The plan would be you come back in the future and add that if the sidewalk.
It goes all the way up to?
All the way, it goes right up to the crosswalk where they currently have a crossing uh for the hospital there. One of the, the important things to remember too, there's an in-lu fee. That needs to be paid for impact to the wetlands, uh, when we switch that over and that's in the magnitude of about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars.
We need to leave some wiggle room in there, so.
Yeah, so there's. You add that to it, yeah.
As, as much as we'd like to see, or like to see a, a nice granite sidewalk there, um. I don't think it's going to be in the, in the cards this time around, um. The uh, the, the asphalt curbing, uh, it, it doesn't, it's not going to last. With plows, you know, so pushing that, bouncing that there, so.
So if you, if you just went with extending the roadway, you could come back later with a granite sidewalk on top, right?
You could, um, there's, there's little changes, you would have to rip it up and build it up, so you would have, by the time you're done, you're going to take about an eight-foot swath. To build a five-foot wide sidewalk to clear it out and put it in right, so. It'd be unfortunate to do it that way and you would have to then kind of. Either put a back curb on there that's not in the plans now, or you would have to bring your. Your uh riprap and grading behind the curb up, so it is, it's not a. It's not a clean, you know, clean transition if you want to add the raised sidewalk later.
Can we get some more cash out of Miles?
I think, so that's where I, that's where I'm recommending that you give us a, a couple more weeks, you know, if you, if you were to select the, the contractor now. Give us a couple of weeks to come back with, you know, what we can come up, fire, what we can come up with. Um, I think we're going to be a little short if you, if you reach for the granite curb with what we've committed so far.
I really think we should try to go for the granite curb, because we're not going to redo it again. And there's so much foot traffic. Work there and walk.
Oh, there is, it's like, yeah, it'd be nice to the. Some other funds ponied up from some other places.
There's quite a few people that walk on the Bristol Road too, and then they walk on the other side of the.
No, that makes sense, yeah, so, yeah, to, to, to at least move it along and that gives us, um, do you want to uh have like a two week? Um, you know, by next meeting or something like that, that'll give you time.
In two weeks, we should be, have a better understanding of whether we've.
Yeah, I.
Can look for more money.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to come, yeah, I mean, you have to be able to afford to do it, right, and so. You're looking at either using more of your reserves, which frankly, I think, need to understand a little bit more about what's available in there. Cause there's a lot been committed for the waterfront project too. I think it says, it was generally noted that it was from the municipal reserve, so. Trying to understand that a little bit better, um, do you have your bond that you just got that? The intention when you got that was to not cover this project, but. At the end of the day, if that's what the community really wants, you have to find a way to pay for it, so that's an option. Um, but if there's ways to partner with other entities to see this happen, that's, I think if we can have two weeks to look at it at least and. And come back with what we're, you know, what we're, what I'm seeing for options, I can give them to you.
Well, I guess. As far as moving forward with Miles. Like, I guess I agree with Daryl, you know. I personally, we're going to have to maintain the thing, so we're going to increase our budget for uh. Public works to maintain it, um.
How much would that really cost if it's sidewalk versus no sidewalk?
It's going to cost. Time, materials. And then you get up here and then you don't have a sidewalk.
Now, what you're going to find, I mean, is you expand sidewalk footprint, I mean, you got one sidewalk tractor, and as long as it's running, you can use that. You got two workers at the moment, um, but with only one track, so that the, if, 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 if. And I don't know how people feel in the winter time, if the, they feel sidewalks are cleared in adequate timeline outside of the contract that we have for downtown. Um, but as we add more, as Josh is saying, you have to realize that additional time it's going to take or potentially more equipment. Um, so every time we add more, we need to factor that in.
Yeah, well, let's, let's wait to see what you can do with the hospital and.
And, and I think we should be reaching out to other people to help. Because of, this is something that the people really want.
Well, perhaps you and I can talk further afterwards and maybe there's some folks, you know, that we can.
Two, two weeks to come up with uh, with some money.
Well, I, I mean, I have been talking to people and they really, the people that I'm talking.
You got to find us a hundred grand. That would be wonderful.
What I would recommend then, if, if that's the plan you're going forward, uh, to start working with one of these contractors, I would recommend. Uh, you select a contract you'd like to work with and then we could award them. A notice of intent to award, it doesn't commit you, but it says we're intending to award the contract to you. And kind of get that ball rolling so they can kind of put it in their schedule and they'll start working with you on good faith, knowing that they're going to get the project. When you proceed to move forward.
Makes sense, makes sense, so. All right, any other questions for Andrew on Miles Street?
Thank you.
Want to move some motions now and do?
I didn't include the notice of intent in that um drafted motion for you to consider. Um, so you might just want to add that as.
So we can add that too, if we'd make a motion, um. With a notice to intent, a notice of intent. Right, yeah, so I'll uh. On this, uh, on the Mile Street bid, um, I'll make a motion to approve Hager Enterprises as a successful bidder. Um, and to allow the town to further review the bid alternatives with Lincoln Health, the interested parties before signing the final contract. And notify for in, what was it again?
Notice of intent.
Notice of intent. All right.
I will second that motion.
Right, thank you, Lou. Any discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Deny, oppose, okay, one opposed, yeah. All right, so motion carries there. Believe that the, oh, the contractors are here anyway, so, yeah, yeah. That uh, a favorable. That. Work would give us two weeks to.
I mean, we can look at some other options and, but we have to have some discussions to bring back to, because frankly, if I'm wrong, Andrew, but we don't do a curb, it's not technically sort of sidewalk anyway, right? ADA standards said you're going to have that vault protection, so, you know, that's going to be a conversation that we've got to talk to the hospital. I know that they're very concerned about employees walking on that stretch, if you're going to provide protection, you got to have that up, so. You know, there's a couple of different things that. Some options and out of there, we have two runs of convo by the bits back in there, maybe we'll have one save over the cost on that. Um, so there's a couple of things that maybe we want to get to see if we. You know, a little couple pennies here or there and try to get a little closer on and see what you can do.
And we want, yeah, and we don't want to stretch it out much along, I mean, yeah, we can get a couple of weeks to work on it and get, yeah. And we'll finalize which alternative, yeah.
Talk about closure date, stuff like that, the hospital a little bit more flexible, maybe we can consolidate the cost on that aspect. This back, I believe, was twenty-one days, I think, or something. Um, I haven't right.
Microphone here, well, yeah, I should have given you the microphone. Yeah. Okay. All right, so I'll go there. All right.
Want to review Belvedere and Egypt?
Yeah, let's move right on to. Belvedere and Egypt, right? Project, where do I have that one? Yeah, go ahead, Andrew, I don't have information, yeah, you know.
So we, we sent uh, their, their paving projects, we sent both uh Belvedere and Egypt Road, we packaged those together. And sent them out to multiple contractors uh for bids. Uh, essentially the Belvedere Road was a forty-five hundred foot uh length of road. Uh, it's twenty-one feet wide, they're basically coming in there, they're going to uh regrade, re shim. Uh, reclaim the road twelve inches deep, so they're going to go through with a reclamer. Um, after they do some shim work, after they do some mill work to try to level it out, balance some of these areas out. Uh, there's some shoulder work included, uh, and in addition, then they're going to come back through and kind of repave it all. Um, Egypt Road uh is, is fifteen hundred feet long. Uh, there's a, a couple of culverts that need to be replaced, uh, there's some shoulder work that needs to happen in there. Uh, there's some ditching uh through that whole section uh that can be improved. Uh, so what we did with this contract to kind of make it clean, uh, we included everything we knew of, so we tried to identify where the shim was. We tried to identify where the mill work needed to happen, the paving, uh, the shoulder work, the culvert replacements, um, and we, we. Try to get as much as we could that we knew of on, in the contract here. Uh, there are several items that we, we don't know, and we didn't finalize because we didn't do a full engineering study or design on this road, which. Just trying to help move this forward, so there are, and I don't believe we need it to either. I think there are some areas that could uh benefit from some ditching um along the section there, but we haven't clearly identified that. But what we did do is we got a linear foot. For ditching for the contractor to do that, so that can be kind of handled uh using those unit prices, so. All the contractors provide pricing for what we identified in the bids. That we clearly identified, and then they gave us unit prices for the stuff that we're gonna have to. Add on or change or modify as the contract goes, so. Be aware as you're reviewing this, uh there will be changes associated with this uh before they get to the the end. We do have unit pricing to help govern those changes and kind of control those changes, uh but you know, ditching. At their linear foot price, if you decide to do two thousand feet of ditching in some areas that don't have it. I don't think there's that much ditching that needs to happen, but there are some definite areas that could benefit from it, and. We wanted to come up with a way to include that in the contract. Get the contractor working with the town directly, or us, whoever wants to be out there to kind of advise. The contractors know too, I mean, they do this for a living, they know where some of the ditching can be improved, and oftentimes what happens is. They call you up and say, hey, you know, you, we we got a culvert we're putting in, but we're missing a ditch for a hundred feet in that direction, what do you think? And we'll send a picture of it, we'll look at it, figure it out. Uh and then have them add that ditching, but uh just wanted you to be aware, so. We uh we sent it out to multiple people, see, we received bids from uh from three contracts, again, this time it was Pike. Uh Crocker and Hagar. And uh and Hagar uh again was the uh the low bid uh on both of the projects.
Want to have any uh? Questions for Andrew regarding uh? Egypt Belvedere or the bids?
I knew.
Oh, we've got a hand up out there, oh yes, Patty, Patty, what, sorry Patty, you had a question.
That's great. Um, I didn't, I didn't think I had a question on Belvedere until just now. But I do, there is a small cemetery almost directly across from Branch Road. And I, when I heard you talking about ditching, I could envision the situation where we might end up with a ditch that would prevent us from being able to take. Maintenance equipment into that cemetery right now, Josh, maybe you can help me with this part. There's a bit of an old tractor road or something out through there. That we can use when we have to just back a truck up in there for heavier maintenance in the cemetery. We would need to be able to maintain some kind of access like that. And not just have one great big long ditch across there that we could never traverse.
No, we we would be absolutely aware of that, and we'll definitely uh make a mental note of that, and we'll get that in in the drawing here. Um but uh but yes, no, that wouldn't happen, anytime there's access like that, even. Even when you get into somebody's lawn situation, we're always careful to make sure you don't cut off anything they might wanna. Use in the future, if if a ditch does need to be conveyed through there, a culvert would be installed. Uh underneath and provided an access to that to make sure that the water could flow through there, and we wouldn't cause a problem and and. Prevent you from gaining access to your property.
That'd be great, thank you, and then on Egypt Road, basically across from the Lake Hurst property. We have a cemetery that sits very close to the road. And it there wouldn't be any direct impact from the repaving, but I just wanted to. Make a comment that heavily laden trucks moving rapidly down roads adjacent to cemeteries. Have been known to create enough vibration to topple a stone. And if there is any way to just have a slower travel area across there, or something that doesn't have. Huge impact against the contractor trying to get his job done. And yet provides at least a respectful awareness of the proximity of that cemetery.
Yeah, it it's vibrations are always a a a challenge, especially when you're trying to reconstruct a road, there are vibrations associated with that. They're actually gonna have to vibrate and roll the road to make sure it's all down. Um I think the best course of action would be to kind of monitor the stones, watch them, maybe take some pictures of what's there and. Just understand that they will definitely be aware of this and do their best to minimize. Vibrations, but there is gonna be vibrations associated with the road reconstruction. Unfortunately, they just have to do it that way, um but but they will, I'm I'm certain they'll be aware, we'll make them aware, and uh. They'll do their best to, you know, keep it as far away as they can for the bright vibrations while still getting the job done.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I mean, I I know there are certain things that just have to happen, and. As long as they're doing the best they can, that's all we can ask, and I appreciate that they would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Yeah. Have a narrow little spot, they were across from, they were across from you, oh yeah. Yeah, I have a natural slow spot, hopefully everybody slows after there, yeah. Alright, uh any other questions for Andrew? We're good, okay. Uh do we want to move a uh? Bit approval along on uh Egypt and Belvedere as well? Yeah.
I knew we approve the bid from Hager.
Second. Yeah, allow Andrew to sign the contract.
Yeah, yeah.
As for, yeah, sure, alright. Lou makes a motion, Tom, you seconded? Alright, uh any discussion? All those in favor? Hey, saying, we want to pose, who's opposed, one? That one?
I'm getting road specs, I also have principles too.
Alright. I stated it before.
Does the board have any more questions for me? We hit a lot, so.
Don't have any more uh posted boards.
I do, I have some more, if we wanna go through one.
Yeah.
Wonderful, well, thank you for your time, and uh we'll be back again to kind of continue to review these other projects.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
He's gonna be busy.
Good.
Appreciate.
Thanks, Andrew.
Long, so yeah. And uh Andrew will notify the uh contractor and we'll work uh Miles Street the next couple of weeks and. Get some options laid out and.
Contractors should be, um, which stand in with the town.
What was the timeframe on Egypt Road again? Do we have the? The, there's some work that, um, you wanna. Come right up to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Uh Seth Hager, Hager, it's gonna be spring, the bid had the option, and it's all bid spring, there's escalators in the contract already, so. Um. You know, I mean, that could go either way, we're seeing some unprecedented times, Andrew can attest to that too. So, I mean, who knows, hopefully in the spring, like it'll go down a little bit, and maybe it'll be a little bit early, but. Um, I'll reach out, when Andrew sends the intent toward, I'll reach back out to Andy to reach back maybe to the Public Works Committee. Uh we got a couple of ideas and a couple of sections down through there and a couple of things too. So that we can work kind of in conjunction with there, there's a couple of areas that may need a little bit more work and some a little less work, so we've written that pretty good um. And we'll uh maybe we set up a meeting and we can, you know, bounce that so we can get a good plan for the spring, get off. On a good foot, um reclaiming wise, Belvedere wise, that would happen. Uh my guess is that we might actually try to tackle maybe some of the cross culverts late this year, maybe if we can, if we get some time before winter sets in. Get a couple of those cross culverts in, let's settle up over the winter time.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
And that way, we'll get ready for spring, we don't have to worry about beating those, a couple of deep ones, so I'd really like to have those settled out. Should be pretty straightforward.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Except. Right. And bounced around a little bit here, where are we, Andrew?
Uh, I think we're back, still buried in my. Um so the, back to the capital project update, set for the parking lot project. Um, we, I sent, I sent a letter out to the. Great Salt Bay Sanitary District, uh we still have that lingering uh. Matter with the ownership of the sewer lines that were reconstructed.
Okay.
Part of the project back there. Um so we just, we sent him a letter, um just to confirm, you know, the last request that we received. Um through one of their workers was that they would like um as-built. Plans, which makes perfect sense, um so you know where your lines are. And there weren't a ton of changes, a ton of changes from where it was originally designed, but there were a couple of things they had to modify um in a written description of. The lines, um so we were looking for confirmation, you know, clarity on that part of it, but also confirmation that that was what was needed to finalize this ownership transition. Um for them to take ownership of those pipes. Um and then we'll be able to kind of be clear of that portion of the project. Um, we'll be getting out the revised scope of work this week to EDA, and we've just from the engineers this past week, got some revised estimates on. Um, you know, what that revised scope of work cost would look like, um it's pretty tight and close um to what we have available. Um, you know, so that, all that, all that means is we put it out to bid, I mean, the the bids can come back well over what they're estimating, and so, you know, there's gonna be some value engineering involved. Um, you know, in that, when, once those come back, so, because we can only work with what we have, so. Um but we're hoping to get that out, um the engineers perhaps, you know. Are a little optimistic that we could perhaps start in the spring, and there's a lot of work to get done um to make that a reality, but. Um, that was kind of what they were looking at, so I know George, uh Parker and I were. Gonna start meeting with some stakeholders down there about parking. Plans and alternatives, um, that's gonna be a, an important piece of this, um acknowledging that it's going. To be a disruption is important.
It's going to be, yeah.
Uh period, no matter what we're doing down there.
I'm just glad I'm a manager of a gas station. And chair of the SLU board. Right, there?
It's a project that has to happen and we'll work around it.
You may take, you might wanna go, go to the office or something.
Yep, we'll do what we have to do, the quicker we we get out of the way, the quicker it will get done, I know that.
Put you in a soundproof booth or something.
Yeah, alright. I'd just like to see it moving along, finally, at some point, that'd be nice, huh?
We can just bring, what was that?
Yep. Sorry, Tom, yeah.
I was gonna say, you you mentioned there were some additional items that came up, that's gonna add to the cost, I just want to know what they were.
For which project?
The waterfront. You just mentioned it.
Oh, I just, I'm saying, when the bids come back, it might be more than what we had available.
But be before that, you said that there were some additional things that came up. That are gonna increase the cost, and that's why the bids would go up, right? Didn't he say unsure?
Minutes.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I know, I know. I know, uh, construction prices they had for the estimated cost per unit cost were way off the first time.
First time was way low, yeah, that was uh.
It was pretty bad.
You didn't hear that? I think, uh, there were, there were some additional changes in the, in what went in the ground in in location, from what was designed for the sewer. Line, so they want the as-built designs, there were some minor changes of locations of like basins and.
Alright, alright.
Animal covers, so.
Maybe that's, it's going to be expensive.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, right.
Yeah.
And we don't have enough money.
Well, we might now, I mean, we we may, it's just, we, you know, we won't know until those come back, so hopefully the engineers are able to kind of. Zero in on some of those estimates, and hopefully prices continue to either stabilize or come back down a little bit.
And we're not gonna get money from FEMA?
Uh, we weren't going to be getting money from FEMA, we were trying to get that permit, that Clomar or a waiver, and so.
Right.
Um, the revised scope of work would include removing the construction of the flood wall at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just in the effort, um EDA is trying to help us work to move forward, and we're acknowledging that there wasn't gonna be enough money. Uh with what's been awarded to complete it anyways. The additional work and cost to get it to the standards FEMA was willing to sign off on were estimated to be two million dollars more.
Right.
Um, and so, EDA, after hearing that, was saying, well, why don't we revise the scope of work, we'll reconsider that revised scope of work. If they, if they sign off on that, we can move forward with getting the drainage. Issues taken care of in the surface, the parking lot resurfaced. Um which is a still a big component of the flood mitigation that occurs, you know, the issue that occurs now. At big rain events. I guess the the biggest hurdle right now is to get that revised scope of work in and then start meeting with stakeholders down there.
Yeah, yeah, get the, get the, get the process started, so.
I think I'm trying, I'm having a hard time envisioning um the the scope of. The footprint of the construction project.
Yeah.
And making sure there's, I mean, it's gonna be different than the sewer line piece, um.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about a giant.
Yeah.
Uh basin underneath the parking lot, um this point, so that's trying to envision what that looks like and making sure that the construction. Crew and the company is able to. Work in an efficient manner, um in in. Presumably occupy, you know, be there the least amount of time they can to disrupt things, um and so. We're trying to look at Plan A, Plan B, you know, one option. You know, phasing the construction in a way that closes sections of the parking lot along, you know, but trying to maintain a minimum number, so we might be coming back. To kind of get some guidance, I, you know, I think we need to reach out to the stakeholders and understand, you know, a a minimum number of parking spots in an ideal situation. Um but be open to the idea of if there's a significant time and cost savings and. A a larger closure, um what does that look like? How do we mitigate that?
Doing it all in one fell swoop is right, cheapest, best option, but getting convincing and and finding a way to work with everybody on that's gonna be tricky, so.
I mean, at one point, they were talking about, can we do half of the? Of that basin, um and that catchment system. In one season, construction season, close it up, come back in another construction season, open it a and back up again, and. It's not out of the question, but.
Mobilization.
Right.
And a lot more money, so.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, like, maybe busing people into the downtown or something.
Be an option, yeah, so that, we're very early in on that, and we want to be able to reach out to property owners down there and talk with them, so we're just very early starting that process.
Yeah.
But that's what we'll be working on the next few weeks.
Buy-in on everybody, because it's a, it's a, it's a beneficial project to the whole town, especially the. Business, having a business downtown, I know how beneficial it is and how. You know, we we do have to sacrifice a little bit, step up and. Uh so, we'll uh see if we can do some convincing, I can, I can help you out a little bit, maybe.
I'm like. I'm gonna get all of that too with Andy, so.
I'm gonna be easy to find.
I said.
Yeah.
Soundproof thought.
Yep.
Um, alright, other than that, um just. A couple of other quick things, uh to get the newsletter out, um if there's things that are good, that aren't being included in there, um that the board would like to see added, let me know. Um so only the, I think the second one I've sent out, maybe third, um so. Um yeah, just let me know if there's things that, I mean, I think that was one of your goals from the last year, was to communicate more, so just let me know if I'm missing things.
Yeah, no, great, getting them out there, so thank you.
Um, we'll talk about the personnel po, oh, the, you know, the personnel policy, I did give you a draft of some changes in there, I know Josh had had one comment or. You know, question on on one of those things, um so it kind of spurred, um just gonna summarize some of those, um the firefighters, cancer insurance policy. And so, including that. Coverage as a benefit, um in trying to, you know, my proposal was to kind of create a a group. Or class of employee, the firefighters, that only that group is eligible for the policy.
Yeah.
Um, and I thought that was an easier way to kind of. Make that happen, because I didn't really know where they fit within the other. Groups that we already have.
Yeah, you open up a can of worms.
So it may, yeah. Um, so this is the first reading, if, you know, if there's things that we want to go over now, or, you know, if you want to wait till the next meeting, let me know, but um. So those two, two pieces there, uh the vision insurance policy, um my understanding is the town does offer that, um not that. You know, the employee can pay to opt into the vision policy, but we don't include it in our policy yet, so we need to. Get that in there, um so that um appeases the health trust. Um, and then the consideration for um group one employees and the insurance coverage, um a change there to to consider a hundred percent. Um, of the co-insurance and and uh premium costs there, instead of the cost share that we have now, so. In my mind, it was an acknowledgement of that group one, that salaried employee, you know, it's a little bit more um on them, expected of them, and um didn't know if that was something that's worth. Um considering as an incentive to either retain or to attract if positions open up kind of thing, so. Um, kind of separates them a little bit more from. The non-salaried.
Mm-hmm.
So work in progress, if we have any questions, we can reach out and, yeah, anybody in the board, yeah, we don't have to go through it now, but it can be, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, have anything there, reach out there, Andrew on on that. Board it to him, email whatnot, so.
Okay, the, just a, um, just a quick. For Public Works, if I haven't, if you haven't seen what, um or heard what they've been up to, a lot of efforts been on, they did get to Branch Road and kind of clear that back a bit. Um and worked on Belvedere Road at that intersection to push back some of those trees there. Um, so that's been greatly improved, and then that curve at that lower end back towards uh Route One, they were able to kind of widen that back with the brush hog, which made a. Great difference for visibility going through there, um. Egypt Road's another one they've been trying to clear high limbs on, um. And and finish up the roadside work that they started and needed to finish up, um cleaning up. Um, other than that, uh.
The. I think, you know, you and I talked a little bit about the bathroom and putting in cameras.
Um. We had talked about, there was some minor, I don't wanna call it vandalism per se, but. There's some post caps that have been broken off this summer on the fencing that goes along the the walkway there. Um they aren't hugely expensive, but they have been, I think. Three or four breaks so far, um it looked like footprints perhaps on the first time we saw it, the crew observed. Um that on top of the railings, so they didn't know someone was trying to get on the roof or just jumping over the railings, but. Uh, you know, it's just minor things, you know, and they went in the other day and, you know, the soap dispenser was ripped off. The wall in one of the, one of the restrooms, um. You know, it's, it's discouraging that we're chasing those types of things and spending time doing that.
Mm-hmm.
It's a reality perhaps of owning property and.
Say, it's unfortunate reality of uh having a public bathroom.
Yeah, but short of having cameras, I mean, it's not a whole lot, I don't think we can really frankly do about it, I mean. Not gonna park an officer down there all night, um. You know, some of that kind of happens, and so. I had suggested, the only, one thing you could do is if there aren't cameras already on some of the other buildings that we could have access to. Um if something happens, you know, you could always consider putting your own up. You know, it's a costly endeavor, but I don't know if that was a consideration at one point, the town had or not.
Did we ever consider that?
Talked about it.
Oh, you did?
No.
But it never really materialized, I guess we could put a sign on the thing, you want the surveillance.
Under surveillance.
We just put that out, out of the public.
We're gonna put a fake sign up, everybody.
The pump out barge was pumped out again, that seems like that's getting a lot more use over the last few years. Um, and they're able to go about three weeks depending on.
Gotcha, yeah.
The month in use, but, um, that, I think is something that I said comes out towards the end of October. So we might have a couple more pump outs between now and then that we'll have to do. Um, we are scheduled to have an excavator, um, in, at the, we're renting one for a week. Um, the plan is to do that, there's three culverts to replace on Keen Woods, um. And then need to put the septic tank in at the Public Works Garage. So we'll order the, have that ready to go in, but we'll be able to dig that hole. Um, the cost to rent that is, you know, pretty minimal, uh, we have people that are able to operate that. Um, so we'll see how it goes this year and try and get that, those things done, um. If there's additional time available to them, I think there's a few things on Egypt Road that we can, we were planning on trying to get to. Um, to try and prep some of that, that Josh and I have gone and looked at, there's a couple intersections that aren't in the scope of work, or at least one intersection is not in the scope of work. Is for this project that we're doing, that'd be good to clean up before winter. Um, just to pres- preserve the culvert and flow in the winter time. And then, we'll talk more about it, um, but the Pumpkin Fest coming up, um, I need to, just wanted to check in and understand. Hoping Larry would be here today, but, um, hoping to get a little more just clarity from the board on the expectations of. I know the, the town has been involved in helping with the setup and take down and clean up of that. Um, but just wanna make sure if it goes beyond the normal workday for Public Works, I'm trying to build their work schedule. You know, what does that look like, and what's the board okay with or not okay with it before I just go carte blanche and, and, and do that?
What do you, um, as far as their workload right now, you know, going into winter months, how is that gonna affect them, you know, pulling them out for. Several hours here and there, you know, how's that gonna affect the, the plan?
Yeah, I think it, part of it depends on, um, you know, the exact scope and time that they're needed. Uh, my concern is more, you know, that a lot of the time that's requested is gonna be off or after hours. You know, the end of a workday for them or after the workday is over for them, like I know Thursday, the barricades, or the pumpkin deployment on Thursday. I think Friday, Friday morning, I think he said the barricades usually get delivered on Friday afternoon, and Saturday they put them out. So there, you know, some of the stuff is, you know, on times where they aren't normally working, um, so that would be overtime. Or do we shift the day so that it aligns with the, the needs of, of that event, um, so it's within an eight hour day? Yeah, you know, but try not to disrupt that work schedule too much, um, we'll do some prep work ahead of time, there's gonna be some streets, we're trying to do a quick streets. We threw there a week before. And then remove some of the benches, we put out additional trash cans, I mean, those types of things, I mean, we can do within our workday and, and kinda gear up for that. You know, but it's some of the dedicated stuff that's after hours and on the weekends, I just wasn't sure.
I think it's a town asks them to do that work, then we have to pay them legally. If they want to volunteer, like a lot of other people work, then they still volunteer to do stuff. They could do it that way too, but you can't have it sort of the way it is now, cuz it's not clear. Whether they're volunteering or whether they're being asked. Or assume that they're required to do it, if they are, then we gotta pay them.
It's been within the scope of, of their work day, um, I, 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 just over the last few years, right?
I think he pushed it, made up. Challenged his schedule.
I guess the, the question is, do we want, you know, if, if they're, you know, if the public works is putting in. Eight, ten, twelve hours for the Pumpkin Fest. That's a chunk of time and a good day taken out of the, they've got a pretty good workload right now with a small department, um. They, uh, you, yeah, so Larry, yeah, Larry's on here, obviously, but.
We've had one initial meeting, there's another meeting with, um, I think with Newcastle and the Fire Department, um, Chiefs, I think Friday. I'll still have a little more detail then.
They have, uh, the, the pumpkin deployment, what does the town, I mean, uh, what'll be done, is the pumpkin deployment, when they put them out, they've got. Um, team volunteers.
More of a safety, trying to make. Safe.
They're doing it during the workday, it's a matter of whether it impacts his other projects, that's one thing, okay? If they're doing it on an overtime basis, and we ask them as the town to do the work, and they're not just volunteering, then you gotta pay them.
But our overtime budget's small.
Well, then you don't ask them.
That's the thing with the overtime is very. No, it's a matter of what, what do we. What does the, uh, the, the Pumpkin Fest committee do, and where's the town role, you know, cuz we have a limited budget.
Ask them what they think, do, do they require these guys, or they volunteers?
It's a request at this point, you know, there's been involvement from town staff in the past, there's been invoices sent in the past as well for some of that work. I think my biggest thing is just when it comes to, if they've worked the eight hour day, but the request comes in from, whether it's this event or any other. You know, and it's, hey, can you be there at five o'clock tonight? You know, well, they work six to two. Um, and so, that's definitely an, an off hour overtime event, and so. And I also wasn't sure, I mean, there's been bills in the past, it's been two years since there's really been an event, um, so.
Well, the police department, we bill, we bill details.
Anybody opposed to paying them overtime for requests that we make for them to work overtime?
Well, it's, it's not so much your proposition, it's the, it's the amount of money we have, what's in the overtime budget?
I think the, I think this year's budget had a thousand dollars budgeted for overtime for the department.
Yeah, thousand bucks, so. But I, I mean, you, you has done this enough, he knows, you know, how to juggle. This part of it, and what needs to be done, and now we add in the restroom facility. And then now we have to do the trash, so, I mean, he's gonna be around anyway. So it just, maybe he doesn't work Monday or Tuesday that week.
I guess that's what I'm trying to ask the board, you know, for guidance, it's my, my first time doing it with them and now managing their work schedule for them, you know, and trying to figure out where they're gonna be when. We're trying to make sure we can prep culverts for flow for the winter and, and get ready for those kinds of things too, and. You know, it's, it's not eight to ten hours, it's probably the two of them, you're, you're probably talking the better part of. Five, five workdays over the course of the two week period to help set up, clean up.
Trash.
By time you mobilize, get to and from, and all, all of that, and taking away, so it's, it's not a problem, I was just trying to understand, where's the board on? You know, advising how we, you know, what's the expectation for?
Well, I think we need to prioritize the, um, it's just me, but the, the, the projects they have at hand before snow flies. And if it's gonna pull them away from that and kick them off schedule, they're not gonna be able to get those things accomplished, we may not be able to. Give the Pumpkin Fest that manpower exactly when they want to.
And I think there's definitely, we'll, we'll work more of it out, but I think there's certainly room for where we can make it work, it's just. When it happens to be on a Saturday and the expectation is, or the request is, can the town help with unloading barricades? You know, definitely outside of the normal, if, if the crew's willing, that's one thing, right? And where are we on the overtime part, and is that something that, is there a policy, I didn't see a policy on it, especially, you know, particularly, are we okay with saying, well, we can do it if, if we have the crew available? You know, we can use our equipment and crew if they're willing, um, but we might have to bill for overtime.
Build the detail out. Yeah, we have to. So, yeah, so if the crew is willing, you know, say they work their regular, you know, they can get it in, but then all of a sudden you've got another. Five hours are, five hours on a Saturday or something like that, and they, they, they're willing to do it, yeah, we'd have to bill it.
Don't rent the excavator that week.
But we've got presidents, we've got, you've got previous invoices that we've, that billed, so I guess we can work off of that, and. Yeah, and like Josh says, he's done it enough that he may give you a kind of an idea, or I, yes, I can, we can get all this done, but I'm gonna need to put in. Ten, twelve, whatever hours beyond that, right, to get it done, if they're willing to do it, but yeah, and then, Tom, they, they still need to get, uh. Reimbursed, but they have to come out of a, um. They have to come out of Pumpkin Fest stuff.
Or, you know, we look for other people to volunteer to help.
Yeah, they get a lot of volunteers going, but they, you know, they, they need, uh, Josh mentioned, uh, public safety, they need people that are. Are familiar with doing that and the equipment and whatnot, and operate the equipment, so. Does that give you enough guidance, or is that kind of ambiguous?
For a long time, Pumpkin Fest has been around for a lot of years.
Already heard from Pumpkin Bill today.
Did you?
Uh, last thing on my report is just to ask, um, not sure how, you know, when you typically would have started, probably a little earlier than normal, but. Um, the police chief contracts up in June.
Oh, right.
Uh, we don't start that till May.
So. My, my request and hope is that we could try and get that settled before we start the budget talks for next year. Um, so just gonna check it in to see if that's something that's okay with.
It's nice to be proactive on, on, and I needed stuff like this, just get a, a plan ahead, so, I appreciate it.
Just wanna get that, that piece of it set aside and not worry about that during the budget process, and make sure we do have accounted for in the budget process.
Nice to be, be proactive, we don't have to be reactive.
Okay, so do we have to make a motion for the Pumpkin Fest?
Um, later on.
So we're gonna, yeah, we just went, we kinda bounced, we made, wh- while Andrew was here, we went through some of the official items, some of the public work stuff, so we. Yeah, I know, we get, and we've gone back, so Andrew's gone through his, his items right now, is that, are we all good there?
I think we're good, yeah, the next, the next item would be to have Isabel. Speak on her piece.
Yes, she's been waiting very.
So I prepared a fairly detailed memo, and I hope you got a chance to look at some of the links, um.
I did.
That I sent over, basically what I'm asking for is, um. Uh, appropriation from, I believe it would be the just discretionary, just town manager's discretionary budget.
Wait, there's the reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Budget we don't know about?
Basically, it would be a thirty-five hundred dollar, um, appropriation for, um, a website that would allow us to do. Both a variety of public engagement, um, for the comprehensive plan, then also run our surveys. Um, through that website, so we don't have to go through Survey Monkey or sort of a third party, um, group. Social Pinpoint is the website that I had used in a previous community that I worked with, um, and they are charging thirty-five hundred dollars. But they also provide, um, someone that will actually help me build out the website. Can do a lot of things, but I'm not like a coder, so they would do a lot of that work for me. Um, and then just for full transparency, um, this would be something that we would be asking for out of my department's budget. Um, during the next budget cycle, at least until the end of the comp plan, which is slated for September of twenty twenty-four. Uh, if you took a look at the work plan that I submitted. Um, so this would be. Sort of a multi-year, uh, request, they did note that they are able to, um. Pro-rate their request, sort of, if I'm not using it for a full year, which in this, for this year, that would be the case. Um, so they would be able to pro-rate it for whenever we can start, which I have slated to be about January or February for a rollout of the website.
So that's, that's a year subscription.
We have that money in the comprehensive plan.
There's about twelve thousand dollars that were earmarked in the budget process this year, that with this year's contribution, there would be about twelve thousand dollars in there right now.
I, Isabel, I had a chance to look at your, your work plan, that was really good.
Thanks.
Now, if you can keep everybody on task.
And the website looks good.
Everything looks good, yeah.
I'm on the committee, and she demonstrated this, uh, pinpoint thing, and, uh, I highly recommend it, it's a great way to, to get. Everybody in town to get involved, they can get their input directly, they can go right on the internet. No, they don't have to talk to anybody, do anything, they just have to enter the data. So they can say, look, I wanna have a skate rink over here, I want a public park over here, whatever, and just pinpoint it on the map. And they put a little dot there, and it highlights, and then everybody can look at it, so I think it's great, it's a great, great way to get the town involved.
Sounds like it's a pretty good, pretty good tool for you guys, so. It's in the budget, yeah.
As long as Andy's good with it.
The numbers on the spreadsheet show.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the thirty-five hundred dollar request. And the, the funds coming out of the comprehensive plan reserve account. That way Andy can keep his discretionary.
Any, any discussion, all those in favor? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Isabel, this is great.
So we're gonna go, we're still in official action. Yep, we've got, uh, uh, one of the, uh, point for tax collector on a.
Yeah, so we've hired Tara, I think she started early July. Yeah, um, just hadn't brought it up at the last couple of meetings to officially appoint her as a tax collector, she was still. Um, you know, training and getting her feet under, she'd been doing great, um, with the staff, and catching on a lot of stuff real quick. And had a lot thrown at her with this time of year, so, um, just to, um, you know, when you make the motion, if, if you wanted to kind of make it effective. In July, when she was, you know, earlier on, we have committed the, um, taxes to her, um. Actually, sorry, that should be August third. We, we committed the taxes at that August.
August third, yes, it was.
The second meeting in August, so we, she was with us in the middle of, early August.
Seven, seventeen, was it?
Just to make sure, cuz I think we had on one of those sheets that tat, the assessors had. Pretty, prepared for you to sign was two thirds, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Tara Oliver as a tax collector at the retroactive posted date that was on, uh. Okay, how's that, August seventeenth, I think it was.
Andrew, do you second? Andrea seconded, yeah, she beat you to it. Uh, any discussion, all those in favor? Right, motion carries. Okay, so we've done our, now let's go down to the CDBG anti-displacement policy.
This wasn't in your packet when I sent it over the weekend, um, but I did put a copy of it in the printed version you have, towards the back. Um, there was a template in the CDBG paperwork, um, I followed up with the contact there today, just to make sure I understood the. Procedure right, and talked to Daryl about that, and so, they're okay with if the board approves it, doesn't have to go through the committee then to the board. Um, this is a, just kinda one of these rubber stamp kinda things they have, is a, I'm just. Perhaps didn't think we needed to do it, cuz it wasn't gonna be displacement, but this is, should there be as a result of any of the work that happens, it's just a standard, it has to be done. Um, and this outlines the process someone would go through if they've been displaced from a result of. And then one example that this person used, she's seen happen twice in the States, and she's been working there, there was. I don't know what the project was, but should there be, say, a flooding event, um, as a, during or as a result of the project, and it displaced someone? Um, you know, this is the process they would know to go, goes through, should that happen, so. We're not anticipating that to be an issue here on this project, so, um, it's just a formality to make sure it's there.
Now, does EDA have something like this, cuz if Daryl gets mad and loses his, quits his job, does he get displaced?
I make a motion to approve the draft at anti-displacement policy.
All right, I'll second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Have you signed that before you leave today?
Yeah, we've got stuff here, and we've got, uh, we have one more, right, we need some, uh, 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 road closure approvals, so. I think these are pretty standard, uh.
I don't wait the blank AM, the blank PM, so.
Well, yeah, so it's, I mean, the standard that it happens every year, I just, I didn't get. So there's something that's different this year, and I did include it again, I. When I first read through the ordinance, and then the second time I read through the ordinance, it looked like the police chief would have the authority to sign off on the closures. Um, he says that it's almost always gone through the board, it's a big deal, so. Didn't have the drawing in your board packet, it's there now, if you wanna, again, right after that, that policy piece you just looked at. Very had provided this, um, so there was a, a, a minor. Change what they wanna do this coming year. Um, was proposed closing theater and Elm.
Yes.
And having a, a food court-like space behind those streets. Yeah, so.
So same as before.
I just, I just don't know that. If he's asking for that only on the Saturday and, and for the food court and those closures, for what time, the parade, I think is, I understand that one to be. Closing Main Street from Water to the Bridge, um, I think this is the parades at two, I believe. Um, and they were looking for, I wasn't gonna, I, you know, I emailed them, I had suggested. Um, just wanted a clarification, but it's. Um, just wanted a clarification, but it suggested perhaps from one thirty to four.
Yeah.
So there's time to, as people filter in and then again, to be able to leave. Um, I don't know if the four o'clock's two, if that's necessary to have it that long or not. And so I just didn't get clarity on that before the meeting.
So it says close theater and parts of Elm Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Yeah, this is what he, this is what Larry has on his notes here.
Yeah.
Sounds like it might have.
So.
And then close Water Street. We've always closed Water Street because you have that bouncy castle.
I, I, I think what we can do, can we give the police and the manager the authority? Because I, I remember, recall last year, there was an extension um, uh, uh, on, on, do you remember that? On uh, not last year.
Not last year.
Couple of years ago. Yeah, we, we, there was a, we extended the closure. Um, and, and the manager was okay extending that. It was just run past the board or the police chief, whatever. And it was a road that we left closed another extra day or, or two. I can't remember. So um.
Has there ever been a problem with some of the businesses about doing that? I know that, you know, in front of Weatherbird, they always had that little car race and all that stuff. I don't know if they were involved in the discussion, the timing or anything.
I, I think everybody's, I mean, the, the.
Everybody's always done a very good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and hashing this stuff up, Tom, so I think they're pretty good.
If there's a change, you know, maybe that would be communicated.
Yeah, yeah, no.
But we've been doing this exact thing for quite a while.
Yes.
Quite a few years, so everyone's used to.
Yeah.
Accommodating for it.
But it sounds like there's a change, no?
That's what, I mean, it sounded like. I don't know, but that was just one of the one meeting I had with them.
Well, I'd just say, I'd just like make a motion to, you know, give the authority to the town manager and the police chief to um, close Theater Street, Elm Street, Water Street and Main Street for the times that they negotiate with the pumpkin fest.
Yeah, second.
There you go.
Sounds good, Josh.
That's the work. All those in favor?
Yeah.
There, we passed that buck.
Yeah. So if there's a problem, Andy, you want Jason?
Yeah, some flexibility. Yes, there's sometimes, like, so there's sometimes there's some changes there and then uh, you know, it might be a an hour later or earlier, and I think everybody's fine with that. It's been such a, 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 you know, Andrew says, it's been going on a long time. So we would, we trust between the chief and you guys having a discussion in the, in the, in the pumpkin festival, Larry and stuff, we probably make a working. Make it work, so.
And they had, they're planning the, the regatta on Sunday. I think, I think Larry said in the past that sometimes it'd been on Monday.
It's always been on Monday.
No, not, not all the time.
Oh, right.
Sunday instead of Monday, yep.
Oh, this year it's going to be on Sunday.
Well, it's going to be hopefully a busy, busy weekend and then next weekend for it, so. Is that it?
Totally.
Is that all you have?
Looks it.
So we do have, uh, we do have some stuff to sign. Um, and you have one down there, right?
Just pass that, see it's on the file.
To uh, we'll select this discussion item, we'll start.
So we start.
We'll start with you up here.
Just a minor thing that, yeah, I don't know who does the work, but there's a, this pothole in between walls. It's got a cone on it.
Notice.
I don't know how many days a cone has to sit there before somebody takes, it's only like two feet wide. I mean, put some asphalt in there. Who does it?
I haven't followed up with the state yet, but the state highways through there, so uh, it would fall on them. Phones there, so I only assumed that they knew, but I, we haven't received that. I know if you notice. Typically, if there's a road complaint or an issue that comes into the office here, we fax it over.
Is, I was coming out of um, Rising Tide and I was going around that to get up the road.
Mm-hmm.
And the problem is, you, you, especially if you have a big car, you're gonna, you're gonna go cross into the closing lane.
Hit it, Tom, that's how I sell tires.
That's true.
Yeah.
Rims.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a slow process. When you get into the estate stuff, we can take care of our own roads, but yeah.
Well, also, Andy, I talked to some policemen that there's the corner of Cross and Water has a horrible dip there that if someone's car is literally going to go through there. Have you been to see it?
I've been to see it.
It's a, I stuck a ski pole in it.
It's scheduled to be fixed tomorrow.
Well, not, do, we, you think we can do it in-house?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay.
They're, they're. That, that tomorrow, so that hopefully that. Wanted it done before pumpkin fest and it's just, I think, you know, they were, what, why don't we to time it up because the back parking lot project would incorporated some of that intersection and it would have taken care of that. And now that that's been pushed, it's back on the radar, so it's scheduled to actually happen tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
So we have any discussion items to see?
Just a casual observation. Uh, this week on the evening news. And in the Sunday paper, they have been discussing the communities that are taking and looking into uh, doing something with the title rises in their communities. We weren't mentioned and we're much further ahead.
Oh, really?
Of all of them, because we've got plans. We've started the process. Should we let them know so we get some publicity? So maybe we get some extra money from someplace?
It's a good point. I saw that too.
Which, which program was it?
This was on the evening news. I can't remember which one. Might have, might have been kind of late. I don't know, but it was in the Sunday paper also.
Yeah.
I know there was a, a monitor that you would, someone had reached out. Remember? There's a couple of places that reached out over the summer to talk and I know Isabel connected with one, one of those, but yeah. You know, maybe they'll run another segment and they just haven't gotten there.
Waiting, waiting to save it up.
Maybe we should mention it to uh. I knew his name.
It's right here.
He's right here.
Yeah, well, we could do it too, for it too. But yeah, but Don Carrigan.
Uh, Andrew, any discussion items this evening?
Oh, no, I brought up. I was, I was worried about water and crusts. Because seriously, like.
All good? These are, yeah, we can just send this one down. These are coming up your way, don't be, yeah. Um, I have nothing to add this evening, so if you want to, uh, somebody wants to make a motion? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, any discussion items, uh, discussion? All those in favor? We are adjourned.
Uh.
Uh.
I made the motion and Lou seconded.